...us as well, just watch over and protect all the young people of our community, Lord. Thank you for the council members and leaders of the city, Lord grant them wisdom as they make decisions that impact the lives of others. Help them to do what is right and just. Help us as a nation always to stand firm in what is right and just. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, we have the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna do this on a one, two, and then at three we'll go, "I pledge allegiance." One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Deb, how about roll call?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Well, folks, it's good to see y'all. This is the American way, and we can all assemble because of the celebration we had on Monday Memorial Day for all the 700,000 Americans that died so we can have a meeting like this with our local government. So thank the Lord and thank all those people that defend our freedom. Amen. Now, we have public comment on agenda items. Please come to the microphone.
Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street, Bonita Springs, Florida, former city council member. I am talking about 14A, and I am very concerned that you're planning to tear down a historic structure, the restaurant attached to the Everglades Wonder Gardens in Bonita Springs. This, to me, is a travesty. I am also a member of the Historical Preservation Board, and we are entrusted by these statutes to protect these buildings. And I don't know what you're thinking, but it is important for this city to preserve the old structures of the town. That's what makes Bonita Springs special. People come to Bonita Springs to see that. There's 100,000 people a year that comes to Everglades Wonder Gardens. Somebody wanted to make a donation to make that building, that building, an interpretive building for the students of Bonita Springs. I mean, the Historical Preservation Board has some excess funds. We would be willing to match whatever few funds we have, maybe $40,000 or something like that, to help whoever would be willing to do the donation to the Everglades Wonder Gardens to do that. I mean, we have, history is important. This is supposed to be a small town with a small charm, a town charm. And that is the importance of this. It is crucial to future generations as well as the young people that come after us. If you do nothing else, think of them. I mean, I am beside myself. I have a degree, a master's degree in soil science. If the scientists were here from the University of Florida, I mean, they would be amiss at what you're doing.
Thank you, Alex.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Magnus. I'm with Quality State Investment. Our family owns and operates the strip mall on the southwest corner of Bonita Beach Road in Old 41, and also owns the property on the east side of Old 41 adjacent to the Donut Shop, about 90 feet deep, 1,250 feet long, about 2 and 1/2 acres of frontage on Old 41. I'm here to discuss Agenda Item 9C. Two concerns with this are that we have had probably six, maybe more, meetings with FDOT and the engineers. We have requested time and time again that they discuss with us what their plans are for taking that land on the east side of Old 41 and how that will affect our property and devalue it and also the community. We have asked time and time again, each time we see a reiteration of this design, we see that they're taking more and more land. We are being listened to by FDOT, but we are not being heard. The other issue of what's happening is it looks, from this latest iteration, that they are looking to take this land and give the Hovland Causeway property a signaled access or roundabout or intersection and take away most of our usable land on the east side of Old 41, as well as take away the left-in, left-out from Bonita Plaza where Johnny Malloy's is. That is my second issue. The left-in, left-out, full access that we have had since 2007 at Bonita Plaza is integral not only to the tenants in that strip mall, which are 19, but it's also important to our community. If we lose that left-in, left-out, we lose the access for the semi-trucks that deliver pavers, we lose that access for the semi-trucks that deliver food, we lose that access for the semi-trucks that deliver kegs, we lose the access for the semi-trucks that deliver the blinds and draperies and interior design items and many other things. What this essentially does by taking away that left-in, left-out is it forces these semi-trucks and also there's a mechanic in there who does diesel engine repair. So we're talking about school buses, we're talking about church buses, we're talking about landscape equipment, we're talking about big, heavy machinery that is all of a sudden being forced from traffic going northbound on Old 41 instead of taking the left-in to our plaza, forcing it out to Bonita Beach Road, which would then force it east on Bonita Beach Road. Now you're putting more traffic, more semi-trucks, more heavy machinery onto Bonita Beach Road heading east to turn left into, onto Industrial, which is the other side of that plaza. And if these businesses, these 19 businesses who have asked me to speak for them, I felt it was much more responsible to come in here as one person and speak for them than to pull a whole political charade and pull in 19 business owners, which I could get the drop of a hat if I need to. But if these business owners lose access, these family-owned and operated businesses, there's only one in there that is a national tenant. The rest are family-owned and operated. There are some that are franchise owners, but one corporate business in there. If these businesses leave that plaza, it will not be a desirable place for more tenants to come in. We're looking at losing service-based businesses that serve our community on Bonita Beach Road. This is the gateway to the Gulf. This is the one strip mall that DPZ said that they liked on our Bonita Beach Road overlay. This is the mouth of Old 41, a redevelopment center. Just a couple more seconds. I understand that Bonita Plaza is a discussion topic, and I would be happy to come up and discuss more of this with you as it is a discussion topic. Please call on me. This is the community where I work, live, play, volunteer, and raise my family. This is an important issue to keep the left-in, left-out for that plaza, for the community, for the business owners, and for Bonita Springs. So I'd be happy to discuss this with you if you need me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Tony Marata. I live at 28650 High Gate Drive in Spanish Wells. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Thank you for all you do. I'm here in support for District 3 Laura Carr. She is my representative, and I'm here to speak to the same issue as the previous gentleman, and that is the plan of Collier County to push their freight business up Old 41 and the negative impacts that that'll have on the rest of us because they haven't addressed those negative impacts. And I believe, I sent everyone here a cartoon, that I did a rendering of what it would look like to have a bulbout. And for those people who don't know what a bulbout is, that, Matt will be better to explain that. But what it is, is if you were to come out of the 472-acre industrial park down there at the south end of Old 41, and you were to turn right, head north, and say, "Oh, no, I have to go south," that means that you go down Old 41 and you take one of these bulbouts where there's a cut in the median, and then you make a wide swing with a truck that can be anywhere up to 67 feet, and you make a wide swing around, and then you come back to go south. Excuse me. Well, that means if they put that bulbout right at the gate, Cordova Gate for Spanish Wells, that we, as people exiting or entering our gate, will have to deal with 67-foot trucks and the bulbout that they suggest to deal with the negative impacts of them sending the freight to the north side of Old 41. I read a few, I know that there's a green book which gives suggestions on how to do this kind of expansion. What we have here is a freight-oriented use versus community-oriented use. They've been happy to have that industrial park in the commercial side of Old 41, and now they're saying, "Well, we want to rev it up, we want to make more money, and we want to build out." What does that mean? That means Bonita Springs has to accept the fact that they own partial of Old 41. And that means they want you to expand with them, and they want you to absorb their negative impacts. That's not kosher. You can't absorb their negative impacts. They have to figure out how to deal with those negative impacts within their industrial complex. The engineers have to go back and say, "Wait a minute. We have 472 acres. We have the ability, there's options here. There's land that's vacant down towards the complex, and they can build bulbouts down there. They could even have it so that a truck coming out of their industrial park could take a left and go south if that's what they might want to do." Those kinds of things have to happen before I can see Bonita Springs agreeing to anything. This is like a deal breaker. You're gonna put a bulbout in front of a residential area's gate. And not only is it a safety factor, you gotta ring the bell for the safety factor first, but the actual fact is that they're going to take half of the island that's before our gate, they're gonna take the wall, the perimeter wall down, they're taking a third of our exit pavement, and if you look at that cartoon, that's what we're dealing with. So we need some help here. Now, we will help you. We will come to meetings. We are ready. We're 400 strong and more. We sent 500 letters to, we sent 500 letters, we sent 500 letters to DOT. It's quite a bit. I don't know how many times you've tried to organize people, but these people are feeling the heat. We want the bulbout gone. It's a deal breaker. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Carol Marata. I'm the wife of Tony Marata, and I too am a resident of Spanish Wells. There are approximately 1,350 residents in Spanish Wells. It was one of the first developed neighborhoods here in Bonita Springs as Bonita Springs really started developing. It's the oldest golf course in Bonita Springs in Lee County. When we first heard about the redesign of Old 41, it was very concerning to people. Several of us attended the public workshop. We then got together and created a quick group to, so that we could talk about it, look at documents, kind of brainstorm, you know, what the heck is going on here? And as my husband said, FDOT accepted comments. There was a very tight window. It was like, I don't even think, two weeks, maybe 10-day comment window after the public workshop. And Spanish Wells made 500 comments. We created a flyer, and on the flyer was the rendering that my husband did showing the four-lane divided highway with a semi-truck coming into this new paved bulbout. It really looks like the end of a cul-de-sac just stuck into our entrance. We have double monument signs. This proposal completely eliminates, the bulbout would be where our southern monument sign is, along with mature landscaping, large trees, moving of the perimeter, losing half of our entrance island, and it's just dangerous. It's insane. I researched bulbouts online, trying to figure out what these things are. I found nothing that had one recommended at an intersection. So it's very dangerous. We have provided alternatives to FDOT in our comments, and we will, we have a scheduled meeting with FDOT. Originally gonna have it two weeks ago or so, they keep pushing it off. It will be, I believe it is June 23rd, 22nd, thank you. And already, we just sent out the email, we already have 60 residents signed up, and that could be a couple. It's just, you know, how many, who's going? So this is dangerous. We provided alternatives. It has a negative effect on our quality of life as well as the aesthetics and quality of life of the entire community. If you're driving down Old 41, once you get out of Collier County, you go, "Oh, there's Cordova, there's Mediterra." Then you've got your nice, you know, small-scale commercial going down to Bonita Plaza. It's nice. You can't wait to get away from the industrial commercial down in the Collier County portion. So they need to address their commercial industrial needs. They're building Veterans Parkway through to the new high school, Phase 1, Phase 2 gets it to Old 41, Phase 3 is Old 41 to 41. They need to figure out how to address their commercial traffic to use Veterans Memorial Parkway. It's gonna be a four-lane road that would then go up to Imperial, which is again a four-lane road, and they can then go where they need to. So please listen to what we've said, and please remember this when you're at the Lee MPO meeting on the 17th where this will also be discussed. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more public comment? Okay, here we got the Boy Scout troop. Jesse, would you like to take a stage here?
Absolutely. If the senior patrol leader would like to meet me down at center stage, that would be great. All right. So I'm gonna have you read out the names of the folks who participated here, right? And then I'm gonna have you have your guys stand up. I'm gonna lead them to scout out. I'm gonna give you guys your certificate.
Okay. Should they like line up next to me or something?
Yep. After you call, call everyone's name because there's some who weren't here, so if they're watching at home, you wanna make sure they get their props.
All right. Sounds great. So go ahead.
Tony Ray, Scout Master. Ondo Guerrier. Andon Cliver. Axel Ray. Christine Raymer. Cole Bridges. Colton Baugh. Dax Ray. Dean Hedley. Jackson Donahue. Jose Pacheco. Julie Born. Lorenzo Pacheco. Lucas Lambrecht. Mark Cecil. Merrick Guerrier. Nicholas Malillo. Nicholas Malillo. Rebecca Jane. And Xavier Casanova. Very good. So we just read those names because this Boy Scout troop did something really special in our community, and they started showing concern for water quality very early. And if you know anything about Bonita Springs, you know how important water quality is. And these guys were actually, they didn't even ask for any recognition. What they did is they were asking for help in cleaning up and what they were doing, and I believe it was more than once, they were out on, how many times were you guys out?
We only, this year we only did it the one time, but we've done it-
Multiple times.
Yeah.
So they, out on Lightner Creek clearing trash, and they reached out to me because they had some, they had multiple piles of things that were pulled out of the river. This is important because this, these are, not only are they pollutants, but some of them, even the natural occurring ones, are messing up the flow. So to having the initiative to getting out there and doing that, I would like to read this to you. "In recognition for volunteering to assist in the cleaning and clearing of Lightner Creek, which improved both the appearance and the water flow of the creek." And it's signed by our mayor, Rick Steinmeier, right there, and myself, Jesse Purdon, District 2. And before we leave, I'm gonna do something really cool. I don't have my own Boy Scout troop, but I was a Boy Scout. My father started a Boy Scout troop in 1984, Troop 775 Michigan, and I grew up with a scouting family. So I'll be honored to lead you in a scout oath. Shall we?
On my honor.
On my honor. "I'll do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight." Two. Good job, guys. Thank you for what you do. Good job.
Thank you, Scouts. You make America proud.
Sit through our entire meeting?
Okay. Dr. Martin, would you please come forward, and Amy Caramba's gonna address you.
I'm delighted to present the proclamation of appreciation to Michael Martin, president of the Florida Gulf Coast University. When I was preparing this introductory statement, I referred to Dr. Martin's president's webpage where I read for the first time his six tenets of leadership, which guide him. I highly recommend that you check that out. Now let me share a few of my personal interactions with FGCU and Dr. Martin. Being a transplant in southwest Florida, I confess that I barely was aware of FGCU when I came here. What an illuminating introduction awaited me. First, I attended Bauer School of Music concerts performed by students, faculty, and masterclass artists. That made me take notice, for sure, about what a jewel of an organization we have here right in Lee County. I thought all culture came from New York City. That same kind of surprise and appreciation continued with exposure to the Water School and the Entrepreneurial Program through my association with the Horizon Council. This was followed by experiencing the excitement and success of its sports team, quite an omission from a UConn Huskies fan. Also, the city of Bonita Springs has direct benefits from its association with FGCU scholars and particularly the Water School. We have its graduates serving on our staff and representing us in the state legislature. What an amazing record and one deserving of praise and recognition. So here it goes. Let me read the proclamation. A proclamation is presented honoring and thanking President Michael V. Martin, Ph.D., for his service to the Florida Gulf Coast University and the entire southwest Florida area. Whereas President Michael V. Martin was unanimously selected by Florida Gulf Coast University Board of Trustees to become Florida Gulf Coast University's fourth president on July 1st, 2017, he was confirmed by the Board of Governors at that time. Whereas President Michael V. Martin has been a member on local, state, national boards and organizations that span decades of service. And whereas, under President Martin's leadership, notable nationally recognized departments such as the Water School, the Entrepreneurial School, and the Bauer School of Music have flourished. And whereas President Michael V. Martin has always been successful in ensuring academic achievement, personal development, and professional success of the students and families of FGCU. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs sincerely thanks President Michael V. Martin for his years of service to Florida Gulf Coast University and for his commitment to the education, advice, guidance given to FGCU university students and the entire community. And whereas Michael V. Martin's involvement and service to southwest Florida has proven so invaluable, now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida to honor and sincerely thank President Michael V. Martin for sharing his years of knowledge and support to the entire southwest Florida community. We all will miss you. Thank you so much.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Amy, thank you very much. It's a real honor. I mean that. This has been a wonderful journey for me. I retired once and failed, and this time I won't, but I want to tell you, nothing has been more important to me as the president of FGCU, the relationship with the communities of southwest Florida. Just to know very quickly, we get measured on 10- Just to know very quickly, we get measured on 10 criteria by the state system with the other 11 institutions. And they're important, and we play, we do the best we can, and we've done well. But the one criteria that I've wanted to pursue, and I hope we continue to pursue at FGCU, is to arrive at the day when every citizen of southwest Florida has a personal reason to be glad FGCU was here. And we've certainly had that relationship with this community, with this council, and with the many other leaders of Bonita Springs. You should know that. And you've made it a great university, and we're gonna continue to get better. Two things I want you to know, we're gonna continue to build our presence here. Certainly, the Vestra Marine Science Lab is central to what we do. And we'll look for the day, we've chatted a little bit about this one, maybe we can share a performance venue for our Bauer School of Music somewhere off campus. But that would also give the community more opportunity to interact with that program. So, and just to know, we're not likely to build a football stadium in Bonita Springs anytime soon. But other than that, there are many things we can do yet. So thank you very much. It's a great honor, and thank you for your service. I understand that this is where the action happens, close to the ground. And it's nice to see people who take a commitment as seriously as you do. Thank you very much. Go Eagles.
Thank you again, doctor. Well, Matt Feedy, you're on deck.
Yes, sir. So we have representatives from the Florida Department of Transportation, Stephen Andrews, as well as their consultant from RK&amp;K Engineering, Matt Dawkins, to discuss the Old 41 PD&E study that's ongoing. I'll give you a brief presentation here.
Welcome, welcome.
Does that mean we're in 9C or whatever?
Mr. Mayor, council members.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, and thank you again for me being here. I'm Stephen Andrews. I'm the project manager, I'm the FDOT project manager for the Old 41 PD&E study. Like I said, thanks again for allowing us to be here to go over this update for you. RK&amp;K is performing the work on behalf of the department, and I have Matt Dawkins here. He's our consultant PM, and he's gonna go over this PowerPoint for you to give you the update.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. First and foremost, just to remind everybody, safety. We've got a lot of work going on this summer, kind of the off-season now, so when you're going through a work zone, drive slow, pay attention. We want those people to get home safely at night as well. I think you all know what we're here to talk about. Old 41, it is split between Collier and Lee Counties, approximately a three-mile job, almost half and half in each county, running from US 41 on the south side to Bonita Beach Road on the north side. The goals of this project are to relieve the congestion that's out there today, accommodate future travel demand, which does include pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as improve the safety for everybody that's out there and will be out there in the future. The need comes from the growth, you know, southwest Florida, Lee County, Collier County are growing. And we clearly do have substandard operating conditions out there, specifically at the intersections at the north and south ends today. We have two alternatives that we brought to our public workshop back in April. Alternative one is on the left there. That is basically four-laning Old 41 along the current alignment, south of what would be the new Quadrant Roadway in Bonita Springs. That Quadrant Roadway would run through the former Greyhound Track property. That's something that is part of your long-term planning vision. We want to incorporate that into this project. As you see, that is present in both alternatives. The real difference between the two is on the southern end, near Collier County's planned Veteran Memorial Boulevard project. Alternative two, Old 41 would tee into Veterans, and all that traffic would be routed west to US 41. That would allow us to remove a piece of the existing roadway, potentially using that for other purposes, essentially cul-de-sac-ing it south of there. The benefit of this is it consolidates the signals on US 41, allows that to flow better, as well as gives us some extra space for potentially pond or wetland and floodplain mitigation in that area. Both alternatives are four-lane divided throughout most of the corridor. The typical sections are the same for both alternatives, so you'll see them twice here. Similar in both counties. Here in Bonita Springs, we're looking at buffered bike lanes, shared-use path on the left side, which would be the west side on this corridor, as well as space for a future sidewalk on the east side. Within the Quadrant Roadway, we're also proposing a shared-use path, wide sidewalk, and bicycle lanes. I mentioned same typical sections for alternative two here in both counties. This picture here, just orient yourself, north is sort of to the top left up there, so it's a bit spun around. This is the one potential alignment for the new Quadrant Roadway. The idea here is to, like I said, follow your long-term vision and planning studies, allow for the redevelopment of this area, and really split traffic up that's headed up Old 41, whether it's headed north to downtown or east to I-75. This reduces the traffic, sorry about that, reduces the traffic at the Old 41 Bonita Beach Road intersection and allows us to keep that intersection a bit tighter. It only has many turn lanes. Traffic will flow better, it will feel more walkable, bikable, and we hope will help with the redevelopment of this area. We are looking at a number of new traffic signals as part of this project. Couple down in Collier County at Veterans and Railhead Boulevard. Here in Bonita Springs would be one at Cordova, one at Meditera, and then whether it's a signal around about at the new Quadrant Roadway near the north end. We're also looking at potential U-turn pavement bulbouts throughout the corridor where those make sense. Again, for the truck traffic, most of that's emanating from Collier County. These are sized typically for a single-unit truck to turn around, not a full semi-trailer, just kind of like a UPS truck type thing, nothing that hinges in the middle. In terms of the major intersections, this is where we'll be doing some further traffic analysis once we select alternative one or alternative two, because that does impact future travel patterns. So at that point, we'll be doing a detailed traffic modeling of the intersections at either end, basically the Veterans, US 41, Old 41 intersections, and then the Bonita Beach Road and the Quadrant Roadway intersection. So that should be taking place this summer and into the fall is the plan for that. I know this is a bit hard to read here. This is the alternative matrix we presented at the workshop. It should be in your packet as well as the website if you wanna see the details of that. Down there at the bottom line, we do have the estimated total construction cost. It's about 85 million for either alternative. That's roughly split evenly between the two counties. As I mentioned, we had a public workshop back in April. We're targeting a public haring next season, so hopefully next April 2023, and then wrapping up this study by the end of the calendar year 2023. Currently, design, right-of-way, and construction are not funded. We're working with the MPOs to get those funded, particularly the design phase, to allow us to get the study approved and keep this moving forward. With the public workshop, we had an online and in-person version to allow anybody that was out of town or busy to attend. We had 75 people total attend. We did receive well over 300 comments. Most of those were in regards to access throughout the corridor, as well as the impacts to the Spanish Wells Cordova community, and then a number of questions about traffic noise and what that process looks like. This week, we posted sort of FAQ on our website, some of the frequently asked questions and answers. We're currently working through providing individual responses to every single comment we received. So those will be forthcoming as soon as we can get those completed. And we will be looking to incorporate any of the comments and concerns where possible into the preferred alternative as we continue this forward. That's all I had today. Opened up for questions. If you do have any questions after day you think of, feel free to give Stephen a call or an email, and we will get you some answers.
Oh, this is not finished yet.
No, sir.
The design is still, we had a lot of complaints out here this morning, or this earlier. We're gonna address those, or you're gonna address those? Or you said you had 300 comments, and you're trying to work through those?
Correct. So we're currently in the PD&E phase, which is the sort of the preliminary engineering. That's where we look at the traffic, we look at the needs of the city, and we develop preliminary plans from a high level. And when we come up with kind of our best guess, working with staff, and then we take that to the public, which is what we did in April, our public workshop. And that's where we wanna get feedback from the public as well as the elected officials, because you guys know this area the best. Then we give ourselves another year to refine that, try to incorporate everything we can, come back to you at the public haring, and present sort of an updated version. So that's what we're looking to do next April. Then at that point, the study would be approved, and hopefully we'll have funding for design, and it would go into the detailed design at that point. So still a long process.
There's a couple here, they seem to know a lot about what they see as problems.
Correct.
Can you work with them directly?
Yes, we'll be, I've talked to them before. He explained the need for the bulbout very well. Good job, Tony. We will be meeting with the Cordova Spanish Wells HOA on June 22nd. So we will go specifically address that and get some feedback from them. As well as, I say, we're working through the hundreds of comments we received from the community.
Old 41 is a county road or a city road?
City road.
City road?
Correct.
Do they need our money?
So we're looking at 40 million dollars. Yes, Fred.
Well, it's not a question, I wanna make a motion. And I want to address first the situation with Bonita Plaza. I do think that this has been brought up a number of times, I know it has, at public meetings, Zoom meetings, and all that. And I wanna make this motion, I'm gonna ask Jesse to read it, because he'll read it quicker than I will, but I reserve the right to first present a discussion while I'm supporting this. I will add before we go through it, that if somebody wants to tack on something about the Spanish Wells thing, they could do it. Go ahead.
I have a motion to have technical staff prepare a letter from city council, signed by the mayor and/or the deputy mayor requesting the District One Secretary of FDOT, the FDOT Project Administrator and the Consultant, RK&amp;K Consultants for the Old 41 South Bonita Beach Road PD&E Study, do the Bonita following. Revise the current PD&E design to maintain the existing left-in and left-out, as well as right-in and right-out, which serves as a major vehicular access to Bonita Plaza and two buildings which are immediately south of Bonita Plaza, which run north-south. The existing Old 41 South ingress and egress point, two from Bonita Plaza is well south of the end of dashed yellow striped line indicating a vehicle in through lane can move into the northbound left lane, turn lane, which allows you to tune into other, turn into the other egress drives, including Bonita Plaza or left turn at Bonita Beach Road. The dashed yellow lines start at the intersection of Old 41 South and Bonita Beach Road, going far to the south of the intersection. Improvements to the existing left and right ingress and egress at the entrance drive, which serves the Bonita Plaza, and the two buildings behind the Plaza would be welcomed. But elimination of the existing vehicular access and egress is not acceptable. A principal objection to eliminating the ingress and egress point or access into the Bonita Plaza will result in all vehicles, which include numerous semi-trucks delivering goods to the Plaza tenants, all to enter and use Bonita Beach Road, especially during the busy rush hours of the day. Bonita Beach Road is the second busiest road in our city, with the course Route 41 the busiest. Making people exit on Bonita Beach Road to eventually go south on Old 41 or be forced, if on Old 41 South, northbound, to go through the Bonita Beach Road intersection, then go west, then go through a medium cut into the Bonita Plaza, makes a very different traffic condition of Bonita Beach Road unnecessarily worse. Motion made by Councilman Forbes, June 1st, 2022, council meeting.
Now, as if somebody wants to tack on an amendment about looking at Spanish Wells, that's dribbled to me, or you can make your own motion. My reason for doing this is, A, this has been brought up repeatedly, it doesn't seem to be moving the dial. And I do believe that any more traffic going on to Beach Road, even though we're helping the flow on 41 South, is making a terrible situation, even a heck of a lot worse. I almost said H-worse, but anyway. And I do believe that council has right to make our thoughts known now, because the longer that you work on the PD&E with this other, it's just gonna make it harder to change it later. So that's my discussion. Other people probably have comments.
Mayor? Well, I wanted to ask a question before. I'm sorry, I am sympathetic to the problem that Councilmember Forbes has presented and as articulated by the people who speak here. But the nature of the resolution that's been presented is so technical that I don't believe we should be voting on something that we haven't explored. I think we need to ask a few more questions of the presenter here and then come back at a later time to address the concerns that have been raised. So if we as a council want to make a direction to the engineer here, we can do it with some understanding of what we're doing. I mean, I am incapable of assessing what is in that resolution. Maybe you people understood it, but I don't. And I have some questions to our speaker, if that's okay. First of all, I'd like you to explain, because this is, I was gonna inquire of you on two of the objects that were brought, issues that were brought up here. First of all, it is the case that there's only one place where you have suggested we put bulbouts. It's not all along the corridor. You have one at Spanish Wells, isn't that true?
No, there's.
Where are the others?
There's a number in Collier County.
No, you said along this corridor.
In Bonita.
No, on Old 41.
On Old 41.
Yes, yes, we're proposing two or three, I don't know the exact number, within Collier County at proposed median openings. I can get you the answer, they're on the plans that were.
They're on Old 41?
They're proposed, yes.
All right, well, there's nothing shown in this presentation.
Not in the presentation, no. We highlighted one as an example, they're available on the plans.
Could you just give us a history of the use of bulbouts, and in what circumstances they're used? Are they used in a residential community environment?
Typically not, because you don't have the trucks there. The idea is, you know, you're going from an undivided to a divided roadway. So currently, they can make lefts and head, say, south. When you put the median up, they can't. So trying to give, you know, everybody options, it's always a balancing act so that they can head south. We've sized them for the single-unit trucks, not the large 67-foot semi-trailers, just the single-unit trucks, because that's what's most prevalent for most of these communities.
And then my second question is, there's, there are buildings all along that corridor that have entrances and exits that are already there historically, all right? How do you deal with those? What is the procedure that one does with that?
The existing driveways typically remain. Sometimes they can be consolidated and made smaller. But pretty much everyone has access to a highway, you know, right-in, right-out. Left turns are not guaranteed, but right-in, right-out is.
So the point that was made here is, the reason why that's a problem, because they had a left-in, left-out, is not a typical thing that you would provide for, is that what you're saying?
Not at every driveway, no. That kind of removes the point of the median.
Then I forgot my last point. I'll come back to it, but I think that's all I can think of.
Okay, I'd like to second Fred's motion.
I think Laura did, but I'd be happy to have.
Well, we could do your motion, I don't wanna add to this motion, but I do have comments, so.
Well, I just second it. Go ahead and comment. We're not voting yet. Comment.
No, I support it. I do not want in any way, shape, or form, well, my comment actually to you is, you talked very fast, but it's very hard to follow. And, you know, as Amy's pointing, where are the other, you know, round, why, why is it only Cordova that you chose to put it at? There's no, have you spent any time on Old 41?
Yes.
Really, how much?
I've, I've multiple field visits, hours out here, um, peak hours. But in terms of the bulb outs, um, if you want to take a look at the plans that were presented at the workshop or on the website, they are listed on there, would be happy to meet with you and go over the reasoning. The reasoning is that the, that was the first median opening, so we're looking to put a signal there, because there's a lot of traffic. And we want to make sure people can get in and out safely. So, that's the first median opening north of Collier County, where there's some of that industrial-
You have to be very specific. So, you're talking about the Cordova gate. You're putting a signal and not a bulb out?
The plans that were presented includes a traffic signal with a bulb out for a U-turn.
Oh.
So, the reasoning for that is, it is the first opening north of the industrial area, you know, near Performance Way in Collier County.
And during your traffic study, or your visual study, how many trucks did you see turn around at Cordova?
Currently, they do not make the U-turns, because they can make a left out, as I was explaining earlier, when we add a median, they cannot make a left out. Um, so we try to balance the needs of everybody on the corridor. Instead of making them do a six-mile detour, we're trying to provide options. And we're here to get feedback. This is not set in stone.
Well, there are, there are other, other options, like-
Yes.
A left lane that has a yellow light, yellow arrow, that is flexible during the day, but at peak hours, you keep it straight. But people can get out of Cordova and merge into a lane, you do a merge lane. People are nice, people will accommodate. But during peak hours, you do maybe a red that turns to a green. But off-hours, it's just a blinking yellow. So, you can always turn left, right? And I don't know why, at the end of Old 41, you folks don't widen what is available down between CVS and, and, you know, the COVID. Don't kill the COVID, of course. But what, that's where one of the biggest bottlenecks is. People want to go to the left, and they can't, and they stop. And then there's only so many people that can line up, and the trucks, and to go, uh, south. So, if, why not put in something there?
Oh, we are, we are. We're looking at intersection improvements there, um, whether it be triple left turns, displaced left turn, something along those lines. Yes, that's one of the biggest points of congestion on the corridor.
Okay. Well, I just want to know that, at least myself on council, completely opposed to you putting any type of roundabout- bulb out. Anything you want to call it. No, because you see, they could change it. You've got to be careful with definitions. We want a light, we want to be able to go left when we feel like it, with a caution. And we will wait. And a pull-out lane that merge. And the existing entrance and exit to businesses stay existing. Okay? So, don't put the hard, the, the problems of, of Naples onto Benita. We will not accept them. We're not going there. At least, that's, you know, how I feel, and I think like 400 of my fellow committee members, and I actually think even more so, that we will not tolerate having that done. So, you need to be sensitive to having the movement go in a way that takes care of the residents of Benita, not just the industrialists and residents of Naples.
Sure, that is our goal, yep.
No, well, it doesn't seem like it.
I have a, I remembered my question, can I just follow my final one? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jesse. I'd like you to, uh, explain to me what, um, analysis was done on the traffic in the industrial park. And, you know, what, because you, I think you mentioned, if I'm following what you said, that one of the reasons why you have to have this turnaround for the truck was because they didn't have a left-in, left-out. Why don't you just put a left-in, left-in down in the industrial park, where that's where trucks are supposed to go?
So, I guess, to be clear, the bulb out does not have to be at Cordova. You know, we're looking at other options.
Well, why do you have it?
To, to answer your question-
It seems to me that you created a problem by blocking off the left-in, left-out out of the industrial park. And now you've created a problem by doing that. Why, why did you do that?
So, we've, we've spaced the medians, um, per the safety standards in Collier County. In terms of the traffic analysis, we've done traffic counts. We use a travel demand model for the region and grown that to the 2045 volumes. That helps inform us, you know, where the volume is, where perhaps a signal or a median opening may be needed. We're providing a full opening at Railhead, Boulevard, Railhead Drive, putting a traffic signal in there, as well as a full median opening at Performance Way. So, anybody that is south of there can, can turn around at Performance Way. There's a handful, I think it's three businesses, that are north of Performance Way on the east side of the roadway. And they would have a right turn out only to head north. So, those are the, the only three businesses that would be potentially needing to U-turn north of that line.
Do you have a compatibility standard at all that you use in these designs?
Um, in terms of the spacing?
In terms of your design being compatible, compatible with the nature of the neighborhoods through which you're going?
Yes, yes. That's the goal, to sort of balance all the needs out here on the corridor.
I'm sorry, Jesse, go ahead.
No, you're good.
Yes, Jesse, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I, I spoke to Magnus's earlier in the week, and I said that on July 20th, at 10:00 AM, when I sit down with you guys, I'm going to bring those issues. And that'll, that'll start the conversation, because I'm not, I'm going to try not to, you know, throw you in the frying pan yet, because you haven't made a decision. So, I'd like to see what the decision is. As far as, you know, getting on the record as the city, I, I have no issue doing that, and I, I'm, I'm good with Fred's motion, but I just want, I'm not very, I, I don't enjoy fluff in general, so at this point, I don't know if us doing this, other than to say, "We don't want you to move in this direction." I don't know where you guys are at in the study, I don't know what your malleability is in regards to picking one or the other, or scrapping it, starting. I don't know the insight of how you guys are going to deal with that from the FDOT standpoint, but really, at the end of the day, we, we really care about what we need here, and, and that'll be on you. For the city, people who are listening at home, could you kind of give them an understanding of the process, so that they can kind of hear what's left timetable-wise, and where the final say on, on these things lies?
Sure, I appreciate that. Um, so, we, we started this process for the PDNE. It's coming out of the, the MPO's Long Range Transportation Plan, which sets the, the long-term goals for the corridor, which called for four lanes in both counties. So, that's sort of the genesis of this. When we started this PDNE study, we had kickoff meetings with, with the city council, the MPO, their committees, as well as sent out kickoff newsletter to the community to solicit feedback and get, get their thoughts on the process. We sent out a survey in spring of 2019, again, to get community feedback, and we got great feedback from specifically the Cordova community about the, the intersection and the need for a signal in that location. We took all of that, including our traffic counts, traffic modeling, put it together, and tried to come up with a first concept, um, to bring back to the public, to get everybody's input on. You know, understanding that it's not perfect, but it's hard to discuss if we don't have something on paper to talk about. So, that's where we are now.
I guess kind of, um, were you done there or no? Because I had a, I have a follow-up question.
That's kind of where we're, that's up to now, I can give you the next phase, so whatever you want.
Well, for the people who kind of have seen how studies go within the city procedurally, I just wanted, you know, so there's, this is going to be a vote of the MPO if, because we're already in the study phase. So, my question is, if this, if you all, if FDOT decided to go with a plan that we didn't like as a city, is there anything that can be done from the city side, other than lobbying the MPO, or is it out of our hands at that juncture?
This is a city road.
Right.
So, we're here for you guys. This is, this is why the study is being done.
So, if we don't like it, we don't have to take it, bottom line.
Right.
Okay?
Well, you've got to be careful with that one, because, I'm sorry, I won't say anything negative. But may I say something, Mr., Mr. Mayor, may I add something? I'd actually like to drive with you, and thank you both for coming here and presenting this. But it is so vague that there's no way to really grasp, if you understand, because I think for a lot of people here, you guys just don't know the road. You just don't get the area. You don't get what's needed. And you're going to put it down our throats, and we're going to say no. And hopefully, we can stand by that, but then if it goes to another higher agency, they do have power.
We're, we're happy to meet with you one-on-one, walk through anything you want personally. I said all the plans are online, you know, go take a look, but-
But they're still vague. I mean, really, I mean, how much can you really tell from this one? And then we get one page, this is what you're doing, you're presenting this. So, when I share with my community, here's what's happening, then we get this, the presentation that you gave already, that you received all this negative feedback, you still go ahead and proceed to present it, and say, "We hear you, but we're still going this way."
Okay, you've heard what I'm saying, Laura.
Mr. Mayor.
Set up a one-on-one.
Fred.
Mr. Mayor, there's something I need to let you know. I was intimately involved, but I know that Matt Feeney knows it, I know that Arlene knows about it. When we had what was being proposed in a PDNE study, that a likelihood was that a flyover would be the recommended PDNE design, the Deputy Director for FDOT stood in front of MPO, no, not MPO, yeah, it was MPO, and admitted that if they picked a flyover, there was no change in the design. It was either you don't build it at all, make the improvements in the road, or you go with a PDNE recommended design. Now, that's number one. Number two is, this is commenting on something Laura brought up, but once you create that, whatever you call it, in the road, and eliminate a left turn out, if you have a semi-trailer, and that park does have them, come out, it has to go south, more than likely, some of them will try and do the, the turnaround there, if it's, traffic's not too heavy. But if it is heavy, now you're forcing the semi all the way up to Benita Beach Road to then make a turn, and make another turn, and come back. Benita Beach Road should not have any more traffic, whether it's vehicles, semis, panel trucks, buses, or whatever, put on it by this project. Because it's already, I, I don't want to say it's the second busiest road in the city. I'd say it's one and a half, like Avis and Hertz used to be. Now, if we approve this motion, nothing more than making it clearer to FDOT and the consultants that this is not what we want, is what the result is.
Exactly.
Yeah. But I think it's a good idea, and that's, that's the only reason I made it. And I, I think that we have nothing to lose by doing it. Now, if the majority doesn't agree with me, that's the way, that's what called voting is for.
Chris, wait a minute now, let's, we're going to talk this to death. Chris, please.
May I go back to your slide with respect to new traffic signals? And as I count the new traffic signals, uh, it appears that we end up with five new traffic signals,
Correct.
if I'm counting it right. So, you know, beyond the, the bulb out, and beyond the, uh, left turn, you know, this, this is a design, to me, I would have expected to see back in the 80s or the 90s. I mean, what you've done is, you've created a four-lane from what would be Wiggins Pass, or from 41 itself, all the way up to the quadrant, and on up to Benita Beach Road. But you've inserted five stoplights in, in the middle of all that. And where have we seen that before? Gee, I think we've seen that on 41, north of the beach road. And it's, to say that this is the best plan for Old 41, you're going to put a lot, you're wanting to put a lot of traffic on it, you're, you're wanting to move that traffic north, either go to the quadrant, to go to 75 or whatever, but you're slowing it down with five traffic lights. So, what have you really accomplished in terms of moving traffic on Old 41? I would encourage you to go back and, and rethink what this is. This is an iteration that we've seen too much of in southwest Florida. And, you know, for this council to accept something like this on a major thoroughfare, uh, from Lee County down into Collier County, is, to me, it's not going to work. So, there's, you know, I'm going to be against this, I'm going to be against the city spending any money on this, and I, I'm going to take care of the businesses on either side of Old 41 coming north. So, I think that there ought to be a clear understanding that this thing fails on a lot, on a lot of, uh, aspects. So, I'm not happy with it at all, and FDOT needs to understand that, at least this councilman's not happy with it at all. And I got a feeling that mostly everybody else on council feels the same way.
Would you like me to address the, uh, the signal question, or?
Yes.
Leave it at that. Yes, sure. Um, so, the idea is, is to allow the safe in and out. You know, we, like you said, we want to allow access to businesses, the homes. And without the signals, with the four-lane divided highway, that access, it's A, hard to make a left turn, and B, much less safer. Um, so, that's the idea. The other thing they do is sort of platoon traffic. So, instead of everybody racing down the road, and getting to either US 41 or Benita Beach Road, and sitting in the queue there, it sort of meters it and, and keeps a smooth progression through the corridor. You know, the other thing is, we are looking to make this sort of more walkable, friendly, bikeable. We're not trying to have this as a, a high-speed, you know, freeway through the area. So, trying to balance those needs between access throughput, and then pedestrian and bike safety as well. So, that was sort of the thinking behind this.
Okay, now, this motion that's on the table is not perfect.
Could we ask Derek to summarize?
Would you shut up?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, would you please be quiet?
Excuse me, I, point of order and disrespect for your fellow councilpersons are not allowed.
And I, sorry, Mayor, I didn't ask to speak.
Yes, and I was speaking, by the way. But anyways, this is, this motion is not perfect. And this presentation is not perfect. I think that if the city passes this motion, that FDOT will get the idea that they need to do some serious evaluation of their proposal. So, if I could call a question and have a vote on this motion, I'd like to do that at this time.
Mr. Mayor, may I just say one thing?
Yes.
Could Derek maybe summarize and make more concise the motion that's been presented? That is one of the longest motions, and so vague, that it's a little confusing.
So, my- The staff is going to write a letter, and the mayor's going to sign it. You may append a motion to it, but the staff's going to prepare the letter.
The, the, the summary of what I understood to be Councilman Forbes' motion was that, this is the PDNE process, this is the part where FDOT is looking at multiple options, and ultimately, it'll come up with an option that they recommend. But, but Councilman Forbes is asking that, in the consideration of those options, an alternative be input added in, which considers these changes and access points to be put into the matrix, so that, that could be considered. Essentially formally asking for what we've heard partially from the public. So, asking that that consideration be, be reviewed as, as part of the PDNE study.
But it, it's not enough, that's the point.
It's, it's not enough.
We need to be on the record saying we didn't want it, if we were going to do it. If, because like I said, if, if it's either fluff, or I don't really want to participate.
May I suggest, counsel, that we do not pass this motion? We are all on board from just talking to it. We don't want what's been presented to us. If we want to have another motion, make it more general about our displeasure, like the point that Chris Curry brought up, by the point that, uh, you know, we have the bulb outs there. The, the fact that we have all these, you know, inconsistencies in what, how they handle the- the Collier County part of it. Make a general motion of our displeasure and the fact that we're not gonna accept the displacements to Benita businesses and people, something like that. This is, this, it's not just these specifics. This is a lot of detail, but it doesn't even handle what we're displeased about.
Yeah.
The attorney, I made a motion to call a question on this. How many, how long do we have to talk about making?
You would need a second on the call the question, but perhaps, can I?
Second.
You can't second your own motion.
No, I second.
Second his call of the question.
Okay.
Can we hear from Derek first?
Yeah, Derek.
Well, what I was going to maybe recommend as far as the specificity of this motion, and I'm gonna ask a question of the consultant. You indicated that in the determination and response to the question about the number of signals and the need for the U-turns, that your analysis took into consideration Collier County spacing requirements. In other words, Collier County's rules with respect to access drove a lot of decisions which resulted in additional U-turns being required in Benita Springs. Is that accurate?
Within Collier County, we follow the color county spacing. Within Benita Springs, we follow the Benita Springs spacing.
Okay, so there's already been, to some degree, a predetermination set by part of what Collier has done by setting up the access points in such a way that in the PDNE study, they're considering what their requirements are in Collier County. Perhaps part of the analysis going forward for the city should be to look at our requirements and how they could be adjusted so that the two come into greater unity.
You vote on the question?
You got a second?
You have. So you have a motion to call the question, and then you'd need two votes.
Maybe we have Fred work with you on the letter or something like that.
Sure, Matt and Arlene and them are perfectly, first of all...
So then, do you want to withdraw your motion?
No, I don't want to withdraw it, because, listen, on the flyover, we went through three meetings where this council said no, and the final way that it got no was we had to go up and lobby everybody else on MPO and then get them to kill it because we were being ignored. But we didn't know about it till almost the last minute. This time, you know about it ahead of time. Now, I'm willing to say this, we write the letter, but the letter should say, we do not want any more traffic on Benita Beach Road, we do not want any more semis coming out of industrial parking because they can't turn left, they go up to Benita Beach Road to go south. That is elementary traffic engineering. That's the second busiest road in the street, in the city. Why would you ever want to divert traffic off of 041 on the beach road to then have to come back?
I agree.
Mayor, to clarify, I just want to understand Councilman Forbes' motion. Does your motion include the concerns about Cordoba, or is this?
Yeah, I'll amend it to include the concerns about Cordoba and the traffic lights, and then I, and all I want the staff to do is put it in writing, but it's signed by the mayor, because we voted on it. If it passes, if it doesn't pass it, then we're back to...
Do you second my question?
Absolutely. Call the roll for it, the court to cancel.
Very clearly, just want to make sure, Councilman Forbes just offered an amendment to his original, so, Mr. Mayor...
But this is still so poorly constructed that it makes no sense to go ahead with it. Can't we just?
Let's vote, and then...
I think in principle, it allows the staff to put a letter together, so if we just pass that...
But we could say that, just that.
We could have a second motion. Vote it down, I recommend, and we'll have another motion.
We'll see.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Cumbre?
No.
What were you saying, what were you saying there, City Attorney?
No, the issue, this only addresses what's proposed in the authorization even for staff to, only addresses the industrial issues.
Except I said I accept, I amend it.
Correct, but...
But the mayor needs to...
The mayor needs to second the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Now I call a question, you second the question.
Don't we have to vote on the amendment now?
No.
Let's vote on the...
I accept it, if you vote it up or down, the whole thing goes.
I can solve this answer very simply. If we are not, if there's no more discussion on the motion, I recommend just voting on the motion.
Which motion?
The amended motion, not the call of the question, not the amendment, but simply that a letter be prepared for staff to address the industrial and the Cordoba issues that are raised in the public comment.
And Chris Corey's.
Chris Corey's.
You see, it's so...
Vote it down, vote it down, come on.
It's still, you guys are just diluting it, and it's not gonna get tight.
Let's start again, let's start again.
It will.
Okay, call the question.
So right now, this would be a motion to call the question.
Yeah, I made the motion, Fred's up, second it.
All right.
On favor of calling a question.
Councilwoman Cumbre?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Okay, now you would be making a vote on the underlying question, which is to send the letter with the amendments for Cordoba and for the signals.
Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Via this?
No.
No, it'll be...
As amended.
And could we see it first? What, I mean, you know how they say?
You don't, you don't write down amendments because who's got the typewriter?
Why did you write this stupid?
Can I offer a solution, please?
Yes, please.
If possible, if Councilman Forbes would allow us to do this, could you let staff work on summarizing the thoughts of what we understand as council? It would most likely be plain language, not as technical, and allow you to, allow Councilman Forbes and others to present your technical comments. You have upcoming meetings, one-on-one, and we can help prepare that, but the letter should be strong enough to express the council's concern on both of those locations, and that we could circulate the letter before it's sent out, and if we don't hear any feedback back, we could move forward with signatures.
That sounds like a good idea, but I want to...
I could agree to that if, in the most, in the letter that you write, you at least say, no more traffic coming on the Benita Beach Road as a result of this project, and point out the traffic lights and point out the other thing, and the fact that if they do that, they'd be a genius to figure out a way to not put more traffic on Benita Beach Road by anything of eliminating that in and out.
Can we have a vote?
We can review the meeting, we can put bullet points together in the letter that expresses specific concerns addressed by council in more of a plain language, and circulate it to all of you to review. Unless we hear anything back, we could move forward with signatures and not have to come back to another meeting. I think that's what Councilman Forbes is concerned, he doesn't want to wait too many meetings before the letter goes out.
If we hear one comment back...
If we hear one comment back, we will need to bring it back. If there's someone who objects to the letter, we would bring it back.
I would rather vote on it, and if we lose, then you do that, because...
Yeah, roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbre?
No.
I'm not sure what we vote or not.
Yeah, none of us are.
That staff's gonna do the letter, and...
And then we can say yea or nay.
That wasn't the motion.
That wasn't the, that was the motion.
That wasn't the motion.
The last one.
No, it was not.
They're writing a letter with all...
The motion is, the letter in front of you says to have staff prepare a letter for the city council.
Yes, that's right.
Based on what you summarized it.
Correct, basically, I only take the first four lines of it, and I take the three points raised by the council.
Did you guys hear, Arlene, when she said she was gonna go over the tape with the staff, and she was gonna get all of her points and stick it all together for us, and then we're all gonna see it, and then we will go from there? So nobody needs to be, there's nothing, have faith in the staff.
Well, we went through all this, went through all this, we had a second on the question, we're ready to take a vote, and then no vote on what the original motion was, with Fred's motion as amended. We never ended up voting on it.
No, we just did, we just did.
We ended up putting it back to staff.
It always, the motion was always to go to staff.
It changed the motion to make it so that it goes back.
Could I have a clarification from our attorney, because I am totally confused?
Councilwoman Cumbre, the original motion, as amended, with two friendly amendments, was to have a letter prepared for FDOT secretary and for the consultant that addressed the access in Benid Beach Road, which is most of this, followed by the Cordoba access issue, and then the signalization concerns that are raised by Councilman Corey.
Okay, that sounds good, a lot better than this.
And we, and the motion was passed.
Correct.
Okay, well, that took a while, let's take a...
And I still want to drive by, all right?
I'm ready for a break.
We're happy to set a meeting with each and every one of you.
Are you supposed to address me once in a while before you blur?
It is the case that we're having...
Are we also, we'll see, I'll see you on the 20th, and I'm sure I'll have some stuff for you. I know it sucked being in the frying pan tonight, but lick the wounds, we'll see you again. All right. Thanks.
Well, ideally, can we get...
Okay.
I don't believe this council.
Okay, let's make a 10-minute break, I'll see you at 6, at 7 o'clock. Is everybody here, is gonna be here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Consent agenda.
Consent agreed, agenda.
Okay, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Look at that, look at that wheel.
After, after, hold on, shit.
We don't have to vote now.
Look what a break'll do.
Roll call.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbre?
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Okay. Any comments from the, from the council at this time?
No, at this time, there was no prepared green sheets for this item.
No, he meant on the consent agenda. Your next item is a first reading in public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, Section 4-194, General Submental Requirements for Applications Required in Public Hearing, Section 4-229, Notices, Section 4-12, 1728, Dimensional Requirements, Delination of Parking Spaces in Section 4-2224, Clearing, Grading, or Filling of Land, Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, and Modifications That May Arise from Consideration at a Public Hearing and an Effective Date.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is a first reading, and you have before you those three changes, the first of which deals with noticing for public hearings. What it does is it allows or requires the applicants to send out those notices to the public. They are still courtesy, however, they would no longer be sent out by staff. The second item deals with some updates with the Florida Accessibility Code for Disabled Spaces. It also allows for the deletion of parking wheel stops in certain conditions in parking lots. And the third change deals with requiring drainage plans for vacant properties that make changes to them, including bringing in fill or modifying the site. Previously, while we do require drainage plans for construction, there was no drainage plan that was required for just altering a site without a building. This would allow us to at least look at some of those plans. We realized in the past that people were bringing large amounts of fill onto residential lots, and there was really nothing that we could do to protect the surrounding areas because there was not a requirement for a drainage plan in those conditions. So those are what's being presented to you tonight. We'll be making a more formal presentation at your next hearing for all of these changes, but if there's any questions or comments or suggestions, I'm happy to take those right now.
Well, how do we get rid of these car stops?
Well, it was a very small section of the code that says they're required for all parking spaces, and what we're doing is we're amending that section to state that they are needed in certain conditions, either by a landscape area, by a sidewalk, however, those will be the only areas where they will be required. All other areas will be optional.
Because I trip over them every time I get anywhere near them.
I don't think you're the only...
It's dangerous. They tear up the bottom of people's cars.
I'm not going on record to say one way or another, sir.
Okay, well, you understand my drift.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve. Move to second reading?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Just making sure there's no public comment. I don't see any one running up to the microphone. Nope, I guess you're good to go.
Okay.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbre?
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Okay, City Attorney has no items tonight?
No, I'm still writing up the motion from the last...
Okay. Make sure it's amended properly. Manager's items, she has something for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like Laura Taylor to please come forward. We have a presentation for you this evening regarding the feasibility of facility assessment study that we'd like to move forward with this evening. We have a presentation prepared.
Very good.
As you know, the staff has been working to develop a scope and partner with Weston and Sampson Engineers to perform a facility needs assessment on six city properties that would include 18, approximately 18 city buildings. We have most recently also been asked to add the Nature Place, I'm sorry, add the Nature Place, and we will be going back to look into that. Tonight before you, we are asking to execute a multi-year agreement with Weston and Sampson. Should you approve that, we would be moving forward with a cooperative purchasing agreement through an existing Lee County contract. And next, I would like to ask Wade Brown from Weston and Sampson to come do a brief presentation for you.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having Weston and Sampson here to speak about this interesting, exciting project. My name is Wade Brown. I've been with Weston and Sampson for three years now, and I work out of our Fort Myers office. I'm a structural engineer, also will serve as project manager on this project. Gary Ferrante, himself a little bit as well, and then we'll do a presentation. Gary will talk some about our company.
Hi, I'm Gary Ferrante, civil engineer, been with Weston and Sampson for about five years. Just a little bit about Weston and Sampson, we're a company of about 700 engineering professionals in 17 offices across the eastern United States. We do have an office here locally in Fort Myers, and I've been here, like I said, for five years. Moved down to Florida in 2006. Weston and Sampson has been in business since 1899, and it's an employee-owned company. In the Fort Myers office, we have about 10 people, and Wade will tell you about the team we put together for this project.
A little more about Gary also, I mentioned I'm, you know, I would serve as the project manager, Gary would be an assistant project manager and also support the engineering. The project is, you know, a good-sized project, there's a lot of disciplines involved, other consultants, and, you know, several folks in our company as well involved in it to meet all the needs of the assessment. So it helps to have another person involved, not just keep things flowing, but also for communication with the city, so you would be able to reach out to either of us. So why don't I jump into the...
This is the call forward, backwards, that's the laser.
Thank you. I'll jump into the presentation a little bit. Here's the cover slide, it's a map of the area where the facilities are that are part of the, identified as part of the condition assessment. You see the pink outline, so the community center is up to the north off of Pine Avenue. There's several buildings there, I'll get into that a little more on the next slide. And then on Old 41, we got the Everglades, Everglades Wonder Garden at the top, and then the Lyles Hotel, which is no longer a hotel, below that, and then below that and to the right is the Sheriff's Substation. We are currently working with Lee County on a similar-sized project, it's Lee County Civic Center. I'll talk a little bit more about that and the team, because the team we're proposing to use on this is primarily the same team we have on that project, and that project began at the end of, beginning of March. So here's another view of the sites, including the buildings. Table that says a little bit more about the buildings, as Laura said, there are 18 buildings. The year built is on the right-hand column there, so these age from... Table that says a little bit more about the buildings, as Laura said, there are 18 buildings. The year built is on the right-hand column there, so these age from as much as about 75 years old at the hotel and at the Wonder Gardens, with the youngest buildings being around 25 years, I think that's the new rec building is, was built in 1995. So up at the upper left, there's the maintenance building as part of the community center, and then there's the new recreational building and the old recreational building. Below that, still part of the community center is the old library, and then below that is the poolhouse building. Then over on the right, we have the Wonder Gardens, there's six, five buildings there, and also the several animal enclosures that we'll look at. For all these sites, we'll also be looking at not just the buildings, but the sites, the parking areas, the grounds, et cetera. So at the Lyles Hotel, there's six, six structures with the hotel being the primary structure, it's a two-story, and then the artist cottages, which are, appear to be all about the same, and there's six of those. And then the Sheriff's Substation down there off of Reynolds Street. So the buildings are a variety of uses. We're excited to move ahead on this, hopefully. So here's, here's more about what we'll be providing, starting with the, up at the top. Ultimately, what will, what would be produced is a report. In that report, we will identify the category, identify the deficiencies, so we're doing a condition assessment, and the intent is to look at these facilities, the buildings and the grounds, and identify deficiencies, you know, and then, and then further evaluate those deficiencies with the team. So after the deficiencies are identified, they're also categorized, which is the lower-right table there, I'll get into that in a minute. And then we'll, we would prioritize the repairs, the, you know, if there's replacements needed, and maintenance needs for the various deficiencies that are identified, and then prepare cost estimates associated with those recommended repairs, replacements, or maintenance needs, which will be helpful for decision-making going forward. And the final recommendations would result, we would submit a draft report first and then a final report. The report is concluded in Phase 3, or Task 3 of the project, but we will, we have meetings built in during the, during the study with the city to get feedback and, you know, discuss what our findings are, and then that will help guide some of the recommendations as well, and the prior, you know, the prioritized schedule of those recommendations. So the middle, the middle table to the left, so we have a team of architects and engineers will evaluate the following primary systems. We'll look at the building envelopes, which primarily consists of the roof, you know, that generally is the area where problems are found. We have a consulting, consultant, IBA consultants that specializes in roof assessments, building envelopes and recommendations. The electrical plumbing, HVAC and fire protection. Another consultant, Burgess Brant, specializes, they're local, all these are local consultants, specialize in mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, design and assessments. The architectural work, spaces and finishes, and also ADA type issues, architecture, we have RG architects involved with that. And then structural integrity, it's Weston and Sampson. Information tech, information technology, that's T-Logic. And then the grounds, also Weston and Sampson, and lighting on the grounds would involve Burgess and Brant, the electrical engineer. The same team is involved, with the exception of information technology, the same team's involved in the Civic Center project, we've been working on that for, like I said, about three months now, it's going really well. We've gone through Phase 1, which is the field assessments, getting out and looking at everything and identifying deficiencies. Now we're into the second phase of it, which is compile, evaluate, and assess the deficiencies. The, so when we identify deficiencies, it'll be helpful, I think you'll be, find it helpful to also categorize them as far as what type of deficiency they are, life safety, building code, ADA, building integrity, functionality, appearance, energy, and resiliency. And that will help not just, you know, explain what the findings are, but also with the prioritizing the recommendations. The project timeline is projected currently, the plan is to have a seven-month schedule. The first task is when we get out and not only look at the sites and the facilities, but do some interviews with those knowledgeable folks within the city to find out more information. We'll review existing drawings, any information we can find out, we'll look at that, and then actually get the team out there and spend time in the, you know, in the field looking at these things. We have one other consultant I failed to mention, KCI Technologies, there's a survey, they would provide survey, in particular drones and laser information gathering, which is going to be especially helpful for sizing and creating drawings of the geometry of the buildings, basic drawings, so that we can prepare quantities and cost estimates accurately. They will also, with the drone work, it saves us time in the field with the site work, because we will have excellent photos that, you know, can be looked at later, we can share them with, you know, with you folks if needed at a later time. So they're involved as well, and so far, we're very pleased with the information we got from the Civic Center. So about 75 days worth to go through the Phase 1, and then Phase 2 is where we take that data and we start compiling the information, assessing it, attending meetings to discuss what our initial findings are, and then the draft report would be completed in the final 60 days, but that draft report would actually begin in Phase 2 as well, as we start generating the data that will go in the report. We've been asked to give an initial assessment of the old library by the end of July, a preliminary assessment, I understand that's going to be helpful for some capital planning, so that would be a goal as well, to look at that first and provide some initial evaluation.
To clarify, we did ask the consultants if they could prioritize the old library first, as we have grant applications in for that, and we're doing some planning within our capital improvement project for the, for reuse.
So that concludes the high-level overview. Yes, Mayor?
$360,000, well, where did that number come from?
We took a detail.
That's a lot of money, you know, to me.
When you break it down with, with all the sites, all the different units.
I understand, though, you've got a lot of people.
Disciplines, we want to, we want to.
Did you bid that to the city?
We prepared the scope and the fee and presented it.
Laura's fine. Yeah, to Mayor and Council, clarify, we're doing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Lee County. They've already gone through the bid process with Lee County government, and that entitles the city to be able to utilize that process they already went through. So they went through a selection process already with Lee County, which then we're able to benefit from.
It's not a competitive bid?
It was competitively bid.
By Lee County.
Okay, clarified, thank you. Sounds like you're going to do a very thorough job.
We're excited about it, and we plan to do a very thorough job. I also am a resident of Benita Springs, so I have a special interest in the project as well.
Very good, that's great.
You know, it's an exciting project, and we, the plan is to prepare a really good report with good recommendations that you can then decide, you know, what your priorities are and what, you know, what you do with that, you know, some of these structures are fairly old, so.
I also have a question about his cost estimate, well, how did he come to that?
We will, based on our experience with records, we do cost estimates all the time, we'll look at local information as well, we'll work with the other consultants, RG Architects is, you know, very experienced in this as well, and then we'll take into account the, you know, current inflation that's going on, and then also project for that, for the recommendations, you know, if you have like something that's going to be done that you want to do in five years, we'll try to project the cost for that with the inflation as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Amy, please.
I just have a question, if you've done similar projects in other, for other communities, I mean, is the scope of this larger in the sense of the number of buildings we have, and or do you generally just work like on one building at a time or something?
It varies.
Can you name any of your other clients that you've done similar work to?
I can give you a good example with Lee County, with a completed project in 2020, involved in a condition assessment report and recommendations for a building, it was a single building, but it was called the D-TAR facility, and it's operated in the Utilities Group of Lee County, and it was built in 1990 or so, similar to some of your buildings, on what was actually an old landfill. So the building, over time, settled up to six inches in parts of it, and it was differential settlement that went on, and the county actually had, and they wanted to keep the building in service because in that building, they stored all their, or a lot of their utility parts for the county, and it kept them out of the sunlight and allowed them to last longer, and they wanted to keep it because it was working well for them. So we did a condition assessment, structural, and evaluated the settlement and conditions and, you know, deterioration, things that we found. They had had a previous assessment that just simply recommended tearing it down, you know, I mean, that would probably be the norm, but it was for storing parts, and we came to the conclusion that you can keep it open, you should inspect it yearly, but here's the repair recommendations, and, you know, they went with it. But, you know, that's the type of thing we do, we try to meet the needs of whatever the client wants, and, you know, we can spin it, you know, not spin it, but take a little different approach if needed, but I've done condition assessments throughout my career in a lot of different facilities and structures, and I'm sure Gary's involved in it all the time with his work.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments?
I'll make a comment.
Yes.
I'm not sure all of us on council realize this, but when you hire architects and engineers, also construction managers, you can't bid them out based on price, you do what's called a qualification best selection, and then the best one that you pick, you attempt to negotiate a fair and reasonable fee, and if you can't arrive at an agreeable fee, you then break off negotiations permanently and go to second-ranked, best qualified. I think some of us may think you can actually bid it out to an architect and say, what will you charge, what will you charge, but you can't do it that way until after it's been selected.
That's the process that Lee County would have gone through, but what this allows us to do is that we'll get some cost estimates, and then council can prioritize projects for us, and we can plan for them in the future.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Moving along here, let's see.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, will John Dolmire, Mike Fegan, please come forward for our presentation on.
Good evening, Council, Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. At a previous council meeting, it was requested that staff start doing some research with regards to possibly drafting some formal regulations for how to handle pickleball within the city of Benita. It is something that staff has been dealing with for a couple of years now, and, you know, basically, we've been pulling from different parts of the code to make it work. We don't really have any type of set formal regulations that directly call out how to regulate pickleball or pickleball facilities, whether it's a new facility or revamping a tennis court into a pickleball court or anything like that. So at the direction of council from the last meeting, we went ahead and performed some research with nearby jurisdictions, we also put out some feelers statewide, and one of the things that we saw was there wasn't a whole heck of a lot to reference overall. There were a few jurisdictions that were essentially handling it similar to the way we have been, where they're picking from different parts of their land development code and making it work that way. The closest example that we had to a community that had concrete pickleball regulations on their books was Astero. They chose to take a bit of a heavy-handed approach, I suppose, in that their pickleball facilities require a public hearing process. So essentially, anytime any community within their jurisdiction wants to create a pickleball establishment, it would essentially come before their city council for a formal vote. They tended to have a bit more of a vocal public participation for that type of process, which is probably what led them to that ultimate conclusion. We haven't seen it really shape out that way within the city of Benita, which is why we've been comfortable handling it the way we have been in the past. However, I, my recommendation is, I do think we're at the point now where it probably makes sense to put something a little bit more formal on the books. So what you have in front of you is a very rough draft of what potentially that could look like if you vote to allow us to put it through its formal adoption and approval process.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Yes.
So, Mike, what if you've already started building a pickleball courts? Do you have to adjust, are you grandfathered in if you already have the permit, or?
Excellent question. So the template that we gave you is based off of a template that we are currently using, which has worked well in the past. So there isn't going to be too much of a need to catch up or pivot for some of those existing projects, because we've taken what has seemed to work well, and that's what we're basing this template off of.
An eight-foot fence with sound barrier, is that, that's in the code already?
It's not, it's not in the code in that direct language, we do have the ability through the noise control ordinance to recommend that they provide sound-absorbing material that we review through the permit process. They provide a decibel report that shows just how much sound is being captured by the sound-absorbing material, and we've also been requiring it on all four sides of the court as well, to prevent what we call funnel effect or a shotgun effect, where you essentially dampen it on three sides and you give it a nice place to escape from, and it comes out even more amplified. So we have been able to work around those issues in the past, but it's not written as direct and as specific. as specific as the template before you.
To clarify, I think community development has had compliance voluntarily by folks through encouraging them to go through this process.
Yes.
So it would, if, if this is, it seems to be a process that's working to, to solidify that, it would have to be in the actual code.
An eight-foot high fence?
That's, that's one of the recommendations right now, yes.
Is that?
Mayor?
For all installations or only those are close to houses or something where there's outdoor dining or something?
That'd be for all of them.
Has anybody ever done this before? I'm thinking about eight foot. It'd be awful hot in there is what I'm worried about.
So, I mean, I, I, I don't want to get too bogged down in the specifics because like I said, this is a very rough draft that would still need to go through the approval process where you would have the ability to, to make your changes. But yeah, i- in the past and one of the re, one of the areas where this template came from, it was used that you had to provide a fence of at least eight feet high on all four sides with sound deadening material. We have existing pickleball facilities that have taken this template and have even been more restrictive amongst themselves. We have certain communities where they've put up a twelve-foot fence voluntarily just to, just to be on the safe side. We've had some that have been comfortable with the eight. We've had others where we've had to sort of, you know, go back and forth a little bit for that voluntary compliance for sound absorbing material, but it's, it's all worked rather well. We haven't had the, the amount of, at least to my knowledge, of, of issues that other jurisdictions have had like Astero. So the idea is to take that template and, and formalize it.
Mayor?
Motion to approve.
There's a comment.
Yes.
All right. I just want to say that, you know, I think the reason that I first presented this suggestion is that I, I thought it would be helpful to codify the existing procedures that we use, especially since it's came to my knowledge that when you executed some applications for Benita Bay, it took you well over a year to come to all these negotiations. And then coincidentally, since we presented this to the council, we received an email from someone from residents from Riverview Drive who complained about pickleball in another community that I didn't even know had pickleball. So there, there is definitely a problem here. In addition, I, there has been some reports in newspapers where one community sues a neighboring community that puts these in because it disturbs their peace. So I think there is something that needs to be addressed here. So I would hope that we would have some kind of a regulation that's put into place. And I think, and then again, something that happened recently in a private meeting with an applicant, they asked what our regulations were. And we had to respond that we were, you know, at best, we were working on them, that we didn't have any. So an applicant would have more clarification of what would be expected if they wanted to put a pickleball in their community. So I'm in favor of that. I do like the idea that we don't, you didn't propose a public hearing. I think I like this being handled administratively, but that if we could provide some tools that you think would help you to do your job effectively and without spending, you know, I don't want you spending a year and a half doing these applications, frankly. And so, you know, I, I just have a couple of questions like you have. Do you think there should be some kind of a notice to, to the neighbors if someone wants to propose? I mean, I don't know if that would be helpful and, but I'm not in favor of public hearing. And then I also wondered what you would do with the monitoring system that you proposed? I mean, what if it came back and it was troublesome? How would you, I don't think that's expressed here. So those are my comments on what I saw there. But I, again, I think you've done a really good job. And I was kind of surprised that we didn't have examples throughout Florida that people had used. I mean, that was a surprise. And I was also surprised of Astero because, you know, who wants to have all that? I mean, I, I believe in light regulation, you know, just get the job done, but don't do too much more than that. So I, I think this is a very good, a very good start. And I would be in favor of going forward and you can refine it with whatever points anybody wants to make. But those are the points that I saw from this.
Okay. I made a motion. Does somebody second it?
Um, I think we're still doing comment.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've got comment.
I'll second it, but that must discuss it.
Fred, Fred seconds it. We have more comments. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just kind of want, I want to point out some things just from a, from a standpoint of governance. We as a city have three indoor courts. We don't have any outdoor courts in the city. We have eight courts that we paid $150,000 for, for the Y a while back, but we as a city don't have any outdoor courts. So due to the fact that all city courts are indoors, that means the complaints are coming from within communities that have their own private pickleball courts. They also have the jurisdiction and the ability to implement rules, use noise studies and all of the rest, and I encourage them to do that. I do not like the precedent of setting city policy to clean up what's ultimately what I view as an HOA issue. HOA board members are important members of our community. I'm a firm believer that their decisions are made best, closest to the people. And I really want to be supportive of them here. And I don't believe in regulating for the sake of regulating. The fact that the city of Naples, Collier County, Lee County, City of Cape Coral, City of Fort Myers do not regulate this is telling because, like, for context, you are not allowed to have gas, what is it? What are these actual, for them? Leaf blowers? You're not allowed to have gas-powered leaf blowers in the city of Naples because they believe that it's too loud and it distracts from quality of life. You're only allowed to have the little electric ones because they're not noisy enough. So if the city of Naples isn't having an issue here, and we only have three and they're all indoors, I don't understand why we're making a citywide policy for something that we don't even have as a city. These are things that can be done within the HOAs. These are HOA problems. But, you know, these people should be empowered. They're elected for a reason. And these, I, I don't like the idea of us saying, hey, we're going to set this framework up so that now we can force the HOAs into doing what we want to do. They can do what they want to do anyway. They're elected annually. So give them the power they deserve. Let them regulate their own communities and let our very limited city staff focus on the numerous issues that we have before us as a city.
Thank you, Jesse. You made a good point.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I, let me say this. The thing that bothers me the most about this is you were arbitrarily saying everybody's got to have an eight-foot sound barrier. And there are, I can tell you, a number of communities that have lots of pickleball and they don't have sound and they don't have complaints because they use some common sense about where they put it. I think that should be, if we do do something, that should be a cure for a problem that is a problem. But if, but I don't think we should come along and say retroactively, all these people that have got them and a lot of courts, you now got to put up an eight-foot fence and put soundproofing on it. A lot of them are built by I-75, some are built by golf course. I think that's the biggest concern I have. I agree with Jesse in principle and I, I could support that too. But for sure, not having absolute mandatory, you got to have an eight-foot sound barrier because eight-foot may work if you have a problem, but it may take ten. It may only take, take six. But there's lots of places you put them and are there now where they don't create noise, it's a complaint.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just echo in and agree. It's sort of like if Steffi Graf, remember she was one, oh, she'd do the big noise. I mean, I'd complain about her playing tennis, but not once she started winning all the tennis matches and got, so it has to be a balance. And I think that the HOAs can manage to it. And then if there's a public, if we do something public other than the YMCA, we can look at these regulations and try to get them to do the sound barriers. I'm not sure about the eight-foot fence. I've never seen pickleball, never played it, don't understand, don't, you know, it's, so again, I can't really comment per se on if it's really something that we should start regulating.
Yes, Mike.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, you know, not regulating for regulation's sake, but a lot of communities are trying to put these in now because it's so popular. And with them trying to shoehorn them in, sound can leave a community. So if they're putting them too close to a community's edge, it may affect another community or just regular residences outside of their gates. So for that reason, I can see having some regulations on this, just because if they put it too close to the edge, it's going to bother somebody else. I mean, but that's an if. That's hypothetical. That may or may not happen. So why are we regulating? You can't really do something retroactively once it's built.
One at a time. I'm next. Mike, how many complaints have you had on the noise?
From non-private, public courts? I'm not aware of any on the public courts. They've all been complaints coming from within residential communities.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Amy?
May I say something, please?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, we have instances where it's not an HOA problem entirely. It happens to be an Astero problem at Benita Bay. It's not an HOA problem at Pelican Landing because the courts that they use there are in the public sphere. They're not even within our gates. It is a problem for the neighboring community Leisure Time Village because that's where Pelican Landing put the stuff. It is a problem for Riverdale Drive. I don't know if none of you got that email and, because that's a different community and the, and the pickleball courts are at IBE. I mean, I don't even believe, didn't even know they were there. So it, it's not an HOA problem because what was described by, I think, Mike, is exactly what they do in HOA. They don't put it where their residents are. They put it up against their fence and then sound travels. So I don't know whether there should be a definitive eight-foot, I mean, one question that I asked, you know, maybe eight-foot isn't the, you know, we shouldn't put that in, in, in writing, that there should be some flexibility. I like the idea that you have some flexibility thrown back to the, to the, the staff so that they can assess the situation because it may be particular to the use. And it's, I know that sometimes they had required sound engineers if you're, for new applications. So they could, if they're, they could have a, like a failsafe thing that if they don't want to put an eight-foot wall, they could get some evidence from a sound engineer so that they could try it and then do have this monitoring system. And I'm telling you, I had a sound problem, not with pickleball, in our community for a commercial restaurant lounge that I could not believe that the sound traveled from where this was to our community. But it did. And it drove my community nuts. But it's, sound travels. It's, it's hard to believe, but it does. So I, I think that, again, if we have the facility that, that the, that the staff can point to these things that need to be addressed, that makes it a little easier for them, I think it'd be fine. And I do think if you have a new applicant and they know that these are the kinds of things that they might have to be considering when they propose these, I think it would be helpful for them to have clarity there. Otherwise, you just go and say, well, let me, let me try this and see what happens. So it's, you know, I, I think some of the statements here are not quite accurate. It's not just a home, homeowners association. I mean, I didn't, I was surprised when these emails start coming. So I don't, I think we just don't understand how much this could be an issue as we have them throughout. I mean, this is like a hot sport. Everybody wants it. It's not expensive to put in. It's not expensive to play, doesn't take so much time. All the, all the younger people think it, think this is, this is what they're going to be doing in the future. So we can continue where we are, but I, I do think it's necessary.
Any other comments, Fred?
Well, as long as you don't say that people that already have them, that there's no complaints in, have to put an eight-foot sound barrier up, I'm willing to go along with it. I think these guys in community development can get up. And if somebody's putting one in an HOA that's up against another HOA or another residential area, that would qualify for sound engineers and some kind of a wall. And it may be a higher wall than you're saying. But I don't think you can, should arbitrarily say everybody's got to have one that's got outside because there's no one size shoe fits everybody. And like I said, there's at least three or four dozen, no, not dozen, three or four communities minimum that I know of that have a lot of pickleball courts. They're out where they don't make any noise to where it bothers anybody. They make noise. And the more courts you have, the more noise they make. It's not only the, the ball flying that does make a lot of noise, but it's also people saying yay and good shot and all that kind of stuff, so.
I, I think if the recommendation is provided for staff to go forward with something a bit more formal, we can take all this into consideration and, and obviously massage and tweak. So I mean, essentially, the, the reason why we're here is to ask you if you would like us to go forward with something a bit more formal or to continue handling it the way we have been, which is essentially treating them the same as tennis courts and then requesting voluntary compliance for sound absorption.
I think you have the right idea, Mike.
Yes.
Yes, sitting in committee.
So I want to, I'm not sure I want to weigh in, but, you know, one of the issues that's been brought up is the issue of the existing ones and future ones. And the reality is that this is an issue over noise. So our current noise ordinance would allow us to enforce it against anyone. One thing that may be a, something to consider is that the implementation of the, whatever community development comes up with becomes a safe harbor for the noise ordinance. In other words, even for existing facilities. If you come into compliance with these requirements and you have certain hours of operation, then you will not be prosecuted for noise ordinance violations. That's one way to get everyone to come onto the same set of rules. You could have an exception for properties that are within so many feet of, not, not within so many feet of, of a residence. But that would be one way to have a blanket policy that would, could be implemented retroactively against existing facilities.
And may I ask a question? Can the, the fence be a natural fence, like hedges?
Uh, that, I mean, I, I assume there could be, I've seen, I've seen some of these fences. They, to the points that were done earlier, they don't exactly look like they have great airflow because they're substantial in nature with the netting. I'm sure that there could be instances where there could be plantings in addition to a lighter fence in order to achieve the same goal. But I would leave that to staff to come up with.
Yeah. Let me make a comment. I was president of the Benita Bay HOA when this whole situation came up about pickleball. And I want to acknowledge the help that community development, John Dolmire and his staff, provided in terms of the way that pickleball facility could be constructed so that we minimize the amount of noise going across the Imperial River from our Riverwalk Park and also satisfied the neighbors who lived around the park. So I'd hate to see the good work that has been done by community development not be utilized in cases in which we're looking at pickleball, new construction, or where we're trying to deal with noise complaints. So I agree with Amy. We should move forward, I think, with developing, based upon what we've learned already, things that can help, whether it's HOAs or other folks in terms of building these kinds of, of pickleball facilities. I mean, they, they're, they're going to grow. There's going to continue to be more of them. And I think, you know, we, we do have things that we can offer in terms of advice through community developed, through community development to keep the noise level down and to make everybody happy. So I'd hate to see us try to say, and I understand where Jesse's coming from, and maybe the term's not, the, the term regulation is always frightening. But there is some benefit to having several years of experience with, with pickleball construction, permits needed, ways to lower sound problems. And I'd hate to see that go away.
Very good. Uh, so you got direction?
Nope.
No.
Would you like us to go? Would you like us to go forward with?
Managers item?
So we're asking, do you want to leave it as-is, as recommendations from community development, or are you asking us to move forward with bringing forward, hearing these comments, some draft language through a process?
I say make a motion as-is.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
That how community development is handing it, they go out, they look at it, they tell them.
No regulation?
Well, the advice is do this, and then you get your okay. If you don't do it, then you don't get your okay.
No, it's a recommendation to do that. It's a, and we have been had, we've been very successful with voluntary compliance, but it is not a requirement for the issuance of the permit.
I'd like to keep it the, how we believe the community is, that they will comply.
Second.
Jesse, did you say?
I seconded her.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, her motion was to not do the regs, to do status quo, and I said second.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
I'll go with the motion.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
No is no regulation, correct?
No. Aye is in favor of no regulation.
Aye is in favor of no regulation.
Correct.
That's what I wanted.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Regulation belongs to him.
No.
The regulation is.
No. It'll just continue to go as-is, as currently provided.
As-is, okay.
No regulation?
Right.
No new regulation.
Excuse me?
Yes.
No new regulation, correct?
No new, yeah, okay. All right.
No new recommendations either.
What is the vote?
Five to two in favor.
Do we know what we voted? Four-three. Did we know what we voted?
Well, no, there's three no votes.
Yeah, so it's four-three in favor of the motion.
I thought you said five-two.
Well, he did say.
There is three now. Oh, Derek.
It's hard to count when we don't know.
The motion carries.
So we are weaponizing the government.
The motion carries.
Yes.
All right, okay, I just want to make sure, okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, we're moving along tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, I have just a couple of quick announcements. It's just a reminder to everyone that the Rails, Trails workshop for the NPL will be tomorrow evening at the Astero Rec Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will have staff attending that workshop. We also want to remind council that staff is reaching out to all of the HOAs, as we do annually, to submit their private property debris removal forms. This is so that in case of an emergency or the need for reimbursement by the federal government, the federal government doesn't recognize private versus public, we have to have those forms authorizing us to remove the debris.
What is the form called?
Submit Private Property Debris Removal Forms. So there'll be outreach from staff to each of the HOAs for their signature on those forms. And a reminder to everyone that our budget workshop will be on July 20th.
On that line, if there's a storm coming, they have to open up their gates? Is that another regulation?
No, so an example of what happened with Irma, is there, that we needed to provide, I'll let you.
Up until Irma, actually a storm a year prior on the East Coast, if you live behind a gated community, and the city came in to clean up your dead trees, or whatever was blown around, the city would not be reimbursed from FEMA. It was on the gated community's dime to pick those up. After Hurricane, I think it was Michael, FEMA changed its approach and allowed for governments to, provided that they had permission from the gated community, allowed them to go in and assist them with the cleanup, and then the government could be reimbursed for that action. And so these are the rights of entry that allow for that. It's on a voluntary basis.
Matt, if you have a CDD in the community, who signs the form? Is it the HOA or the CDD?
It would most likely need to be the CDD, but preferably, probably both, because FEMA is a paperwork animal.
I ask a question about, do they have to open up their gates so emergency people can get in, if there's a storm approaching?
Clarify, if there's an emergency and first responders need to respond, they have access through any gate to life safety issues.
Okay. And also, Mayor, most HOAs, if there's something like a hurricane coming, the guard shack is vacated and they leave the gates in the up position.
Okay, which is no requirement.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. I lead.
That's all my items.
Mayor and council reports, do you have any reports for us?
Yeah.
I do. I thought that Marissa, I don't know if she's still here, did a great job on Memorial, as did Amy, Arissa?
No.
Carissa, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And as did Amy at Memorial Day. It was, the music was wonderful, and the attendance was fabulous, and it was great weather, at least in the morning.
That's it. I'd also like to thank Amy for her proclamation and presentation.
I can read, thank you.
Very good, very good, I appreciate it.
You'll have to do it next time.
That's right, you won't be here, I guess, that's your last chance.
Well, I have some, a couple of things I need to present.
Okay, yes, sir.
I will throw all the kudos to the Memorial Day celebration, and also stress again that everybody, whether you were there or not, you had 700 and some thousand soldiers die to make it possible, not only for you to come to the meeting tonight, but to disagree publicly with the government, to do all kinds of things. That's really a big right, because most countries don't have it. Now, the other thing that I wanted to just touch on is the Florida League of Cities 100 Year Anniversary, be celebrated in August. The last thing that I have to bring up, on Friday of last week, there was a meeting of about three hours, Jackie Jensen was with me, and from community development, she's the staff member representing the city on what's called the Compact for Southwest Florida Resiliency Compact. And this thing that I passed around is her summary of what happened, the thing in red is what I personally said publicly, and you can read those yourself, but there is one action item. I made it clear to them, that none of us in general from a city, there might be an exception, that we cannot go there and agree to anything that obligates the city to anything without coming back and getting the city to approve it. One thing came up that requires action tonight, that is Florida Gulf Coast University, the Water School, they want to offer to the cities at no charge, that they will write up a resiliency vulnerability analysis for any given city, they'll either write it up, or they'll work with your grant writer. Then if it gets approved, this is a big condition of it, it will go in the name of Charlotte County, and they will have administration powers, and they can bring in other organizations, some of which can be problematic with many different cities, or the county, or whatever. We have to say, we either want to let them do this, or the answer is no for us. I say no, but you all can overrule me. I don't think you'd ever want to turn in a grant, even if they wrote it, even if it would get approved, that it would be in the name of Charlotte County, and they would be kind of administering it with our input, and be able to bring in other organizations, some of which I'm not going to name any, but some of you know some, that aren't, that are in, up the road a bit. So my recommendation to you would be that we turn it down. I'll make a motion to effect.
Second.
If you overrule it, that's fine.
Second.
Okay.
You have a comment? I agree with Fred.
Deb, I think, do we need?
I don't need another government telling us what to do.
No.
Do we need to do a motion, or can we just?
No, I made a motion, somebody said.
I seconded it.
Well, then vote on it, and we're done.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Thank you, Fred.
You can read the other things that I said in red, if you.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I want to take a minute just to, there was a disturbing thing that happened last week, which was covered in the paper at Coconut Point, and in one of the shopping plazas in Naples, which was the papering of windshields with some very disturbing words and swastikas, and comments that were demeaning to our Jewish population, and to our Latino-Mexican And I want to personally, on my own behalf, and council wants to join me, that's fine, I'd like to personally condemn that action. I thought that we were past that as a community of Southwest Florida people, but I guess I'm to the age that nothing surprises me anymore, especially from the weakest links in our community. You know, when Fred talked about the 700,000 soldiers that died in our military conflicts, and to understand what they died for, and then to see the type of literature that's being put on car windshields indiscriminately condemning various of our citizens, it's just disturbing. It sort of took the pleasure out of the Memorial Day holiday for me, because I realize those people exist, and they live among us, so I just want to issue a personal condemnation of that action. I know the Lee County Sheriff's Office is investigating it, and I hope they can find out who was involved, and make sure that those folks don't feel that they have the privilege to do that again, so that's what I wanted.
Can I just add, I talked to Rabbi Greenberg.
Oh, go ahead. No, I was going to say, it was interesting, because Rabbi Greenberg attended the Memorial Day service, so I had long conversations with him, and I offered on behalf of the council our support, our continued support for anyone within their congregation, they happen to be in my district, but where the Shabbat is. And as usual, he responded in a very positive way, where he said that he thought his congregation, you know, though it is upsetting to them in some ways, scary, that he knows that this community is embracing of all religions, and that he appreciated, you know, all the support that we could show. And I am going to send a note from me personally, because they are in the district. He also mentioned, I don't know if this is correct, but he was familiar with the organization that did those, and he said that that was a national group, it wasn't just a local group that produced that, and that he had seen things like that before, which was surprising to me, because I thought it was kind of a professional job, I didn't think it was kids or anything, just to do that.
Yeah, they're from California.
But it was so disconcerting for me, and upsetting for me, and I had the same reaction, and thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Mayor?
But they're not local.
On the same subject, and I know it was an innocent omission, the flyer also called the governor a Nazi.
Right.
Now, you may not agree with many things he's done, and you have the right to do that, but he's, no one in the state that I know of that's in any power of authority is a Nazi. They may be people you don't like because of things they do, but they don't deserve to be called a Nazi.
That's right.
Okay, may I just talk, this was not in the city of Anita Springs. These flyers were not in the city of Anita Springs.
And they're not local.
And they are, what?
And they're not local, they're out of state.
Not in the city of Anita Springs. It's illegal to put flyers on a car in the city of Anita Springs and Lee County. They have respect enough for the city of Anita Springs not to put that trash on cars in the city of Anita Springs. Bringing it up for conversation is wasting our time. It's done, it's over with, get over it.
Okay.
All right?
Some of us took great offense to it, but that's okay.
But it's not in the city, let's say, let's represent the city.
Our citizens were at.
I know, I know, I read it, I read it.
Our citizens were at Coconut Point and had them put on their windshields.
Okay.
Our responsibilities as our citizens go beyond our city limits.
Eight oh eight, can we approve minutes?
That's my opinion, I'm allowed to say my opinion.
I'm glad of free speech, because we know where you stand.
Doing minutes now, are we done?
Yeah.
Okay, 16, the minutes from 15, 18, 22, 2022?
Most of it approved. Second. Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, public comment? Alex?
Yes, I'm going to speak now on the Rails, Trails Project. Now, this, we have nearly 2 million people in permanent residence of Lee, Collier, and Charlotte Counties. We have a traffic problem here already. Amtrak is planning to run the Floridian down to Southwest Florida, and part of it is to the Fort Myers-Naples area. Now, Amtrak is paying the whole freight, not freight, but the whole cost of the system. But it is important to everybody in Lee, Collier, and Charlotte Counties to have passenger rail service to this area. We have a lot of people that will use that, and we have, this is a gift to Lee and Collier Counties, and Charlotte County. So keep the railroad track, the railroad track is present, don't move the track, all you have to do is put a fence between the track, and you don't need to tear up the track, all you do is you need 25, what, 25, 30 feet of right-of-way? Am I right? Or bike path? You don't, more, 20 feet? And Amtrak will put the fence in, simple. And we need to move people here. You saw, you see Interstate 75, what a mess that is, US 41, and this is in season, out of season, excuse me, out of season, not in season. I mean, what are we going to do? We have to think of, it's like in Europe, like in every other major metropolitan area in the United States. We are, whether we like it or not, a major metropolitan. We are, whether we like it or not, a major metropolitan area. Nearly 2 million people, we've got to move the people. I mean, otherwise, what's going to happen here? I mean, we're going to be, what, how are we going to move? What, what will happen? We have accidents on Interstate seventy-five nearly every single day. We have accidents on US forty-one, and what about hurricanes? How are we evacuating people? What in bringing emergency supplies down here? Freight, you know, think about that. That's important to the, this is a life safety matter.
Thanks, Alex. You make me a nice, positive one.
Ruth Condit for the record, and I would just like to compliment the Veterans Advisory Committee on a terrific Memorial Day event, and everyone who participated deserves a medal for excellence.
Mayor, Council, Chris Magnus with Quality State Investment, Johnny Malloy's Shopping Center on Southwest Corner Benita Beach Road and Old Forty-One. I want to thank you for your discussion on that tonight. It's a very important discussion that we have on that, and I think that though there were some yes votes and some no votes, that by and large, there was quite a lot of agreement that this plan from RKNK needs quite a bit of work. I propose to you that each of you drive southbound on Old Forty-One, please drive by the plaza. Imagine that you are a semi truck delivering supplies to one of the tenants, the nineteen family owned and operated businesses in that plaza. Next, do it again, instead of turning into that plaza, find your way into that plaza without turning into it. You are going to go southbound, I'm sorry, you're going to go northbound on Old Forty-One, you're going to turn west onto Benita Beach Road, you're going to turn south on Industrial, you're going to have to cross Benita Beach Road, and then you have to weave your way into the plaza from there. This is not a nice to have left-hand turn. This left-hand turn is essential to our community. We want to keep services, good, strong operating family owned and operated businesses in that plaza. If you allow this plaza to become blighted by removing that left-hand turn, it will affect our community for generations. We are talking about losing not only family owned and operated businesses, but we're talking about the addition of tertiary uses that we don't necessarily want on the gateway to the Gulf and at the mouth of our Old Forty-One redevelopment corridor. Right now, we have a good, strong strip mall with great uses and we cannot keep that without your help. Throughout COVID, we never lost a single tenant. We worked with every single one of them. We are family owned and operated, they are family owned and operated, we work together to get that done. We need your help now to continue what we have on that corridor, on the Benita Beach Road overlay and the Old Forty-One redevelopment area. Help us keep that access, it is so important to keep in good tenants. And when you look at what RKNK came in and said, they said that the utmost important thing is safety. How safe is it to send semi trucks across two lanes of Benita Beach Road on Industrial when they can just take a nice left-hand turn like they have it now? That's not safe. That is not what the goal of their project is. They talk about congestion and relieving congestion. How are you relieving congestion? By sending a semi truck from northbound Old Forty-One onto westbound Benita Beach Road to then be in that little turn lane, clogging up Benita Beach Road while they wait for traffic to slow down enough to turn onto Industrial to access that plaza. This is not a nice to have, this is a must have for our community. So I do believe that most of council is in agreement on what we're looking for for RKNK, and I beg you, I plead you, protect our community, protect the nineteen businesses that are there, protect our family owned business for that shopping center. We need your help and if you allow that left in, left out to be terminated by FDOT or the commissioners, we are going to have a blighted community. Thank you for your support and please do your homework, make that drive, make those turns, pretend you're a semi truck, make the effort, do your homework, and you're going to see it's not safe and it does not relieve congestion and it will be bad for our whole community. Thank you so much for your efforts tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, City Council, my name is Kyle Moran, I've been a resident, first of, first coming to Benita Springs 30 years ago. I would like to begin by echoing the previous commenter's comments. Mr. Magnus was very impassioned there, but basic studies show that when you change ingress and egress out of, of areas, that it can cause real harm and real blight. And that's a very important plaza you just pointed out, right in the center of our community and right at the heart of our downtown, which I'd also like to talk to you about, because I would like to thank you again for your level-headed leadership on a highly visible and key project for our city and our downtown, that long overdue Bamboo redevelopment project. Thanks for focusing on the facts, thanks for focusing on what matters most for our community. I also think that city staff deserves a tremendous amount of credit. They've been working diligently and expertly on building a strong foundation for that downtown for many years. Under your guidance, they've worked alongside some truly world-class and world-renowned experts on downtown revitalization and have identified what's necessary to create a great downtown for Benita Springs. As the public, we've invested about $60 million into that downtown, all with the hope of turning around and creating a great place for the community. Benetians desire and deserve a vibrant downtown with lots of great restaurants, boutiques and great public parks. The true heart of our community is what was envisioned in the comprehensive plan in the city laid out a couple decades ago now. And a great downtown cannot all happen on one five acre parcel. It needs to happen across multiple blocks of the downtown. But if we halt progress on the Bamboo Village reconstruction, we threaten to prevent our entire downtown from improving. That developer, Baron Collier Companies, has a unique ability, they have the wherewithal to finance substantial private construction on top of public lands. They are going to create the first ever public river access and public park access on site, and they're going to provide substantial ongoing revenues to the city. If we short-circuit that project, it would sell, send an entire chill through downtown. It's unreasonable to expect other developers and banks and restaurateurs and shop owners to dare to try to invest in the downtown where a very capable developer already failed. That Bamboo Village site is downtown's biggest dirt lot. It's the key to unlocking the entire downtown. Without it, we might get a coffee shop here or a brewery there or a food truck there, but we won't get the substantial private investment needed to improve all of downtown. Without that project going forward, we might as well get used to looking at pawn shops and check cashing spots because they'll remain there indefinitely. Despite runaway inflation, a plummeting stock market, international war and the prospects of recession, it appears we still have a window to create a thriving downtown. Let's not lose that precious opportunity. Thanks again for your level-headed leadership, I really appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Hey, there you are, how you doing, Bud?
Hi, thank you for having me, Council, and I appreciate everything you've done and how the city's going. My concern for tonight or just the general concern? Oh, excuse me, my name is Miguel Lopez. I've been a resident for some 25 years and I really love the city, but one problem I'm having is affordable housing for lower income or just the working class type of person. And it's a beautiful city and there's a lot of development going on, but my coworkers drive from Lehigh or Cape Coral to work here in Benita Springs, and I'm only able to live here because of my brother. Just my concern is, are native Benetians being outpriced? Is affordable housing something that we can work on? Or if I don't know about, excuse my ignorance, it's just something difficult for me to find and want to live here, but it's outpricing me. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Anybody else? Were adjourned?
Yay.